All members are present excluding Coppel and Pedant. Was this meeting properly noticed?
Yes, it was. It was a reminder it's being recorded.
Welcome to Visitors. Is there public comments?
Yes, we have three. The first one was Kelly McHemmer.
Good evening. My name is Kelly McHemmer, and I have lived in the district for nineteen years. I have a daughter that's a sports athlete at St. Croix Central, and not many of those exist these days. So we see plenty of different team dynamics amongst players, coaches, and the administration within those local sports. One thing that's consistent is the parent communication protocol that is not followed at SCC. The pattern of parent behavior that is perpetuated and allowed to go on will never result in a sustained and successful girls athletics program at SCC. The role of high school sports is to prepare girls for their life after high school. I expect the educational institutions that our children attend to strive for the greatest level of success for each of our students. The goal at SCC is to make our kids feel good. I'm not sure about most of you, but my days do not consist of no conflict, no hard decisions. Those are the life lessons we should be teaching our kids. You aren't always going to get the starting position. You aren't always going to agree with the coach's calls. But these are all learning opportunities for our students beyond sports. My daughter was physically abused by other players on the team for freshman season, and the administration advised us not to do anything about it because it would cause more problems. That was the advice my family received. They didn't show up in practices after that to protect my kid. The only protection was to the accuser and the bully, not the victim. Those are the lessons my child will take from SCC. The current state of feelings regarding the high school administration and those parents and students that don't show up in the high school administration's office may not match what you all are hearing and seeing. And I know that if I was on the board and my reputation was on the line, I'd certainly want to know that. I am pleading to ask questions about the why behind the termination of the girls' basketball coaches after the most successful season in school history since two thousand seventeen to eighteen. I'll give you a little end of season recap. An away game at Baldwin on a Tuesday, getting beat by twenty-eight, coming home that Thursday and beating Ellsworth by twenty-four. Then heading back to Baldwin the next Tuesday for a playoff game against a number-six Blackhawk team and number-eleven Central team and winning four to four to thirty-seven. I don't know what else these coaches and players could have done to demonstrate that they're invested in this program. The employee handbook references termination protocol in part two. Section one, disciplined termination and unravilable. There was never a meeting. There was a phone call. There was no reason provided in that phone call and no opportunity for representation to be present. Hence, there's no avenue for these coaches to voice their concern and/or file grievances. The coaches, players, and their families who gave their time for the girls' basketball program deserve those answers. Thank you.
Next is Holly Spoon.
Good evening. I am Holly Spoon, a former girls' varsity basketball coach. I have no intention of talking about why I should not have been relieved of my duties as a head coach. I'm happy to have that discussion, but it's moot point at this time. What frustrates me is how all of this has gone down. I'm not the first person it has happened to in this way, but I sure hope that I am the last. Why don't have this conversation in private? Because from my experience, I do not trust that my voice will be heard or respected. Believe me when I say that it does not break my heart to no longer be working for someone who, amongst other things, refuses to recognize my marriage and that my wife is simply not my best friend. Right now, if you're a student, a parent, a teacher, a staff member, or a coach at the high school, and you have a concern or a conflict with one of the administrators, where do you go to get an impartial ear? How do you expect a person to get a fair shake when one is the godparent for the other's child? Having a chance to work with your mentor or mentee and someone that is your best friend is no doubt probably great, but is it fair to those that are not part of that club? Where or who are the checks and balances in place at the high school and in this district? The past three years has not been fun for myself, my family, my assistant coaches, and their families. We don't coach because it's rewarding for us. We coach because we want to help our student athletes learn and grow in a safe place between the lines. A place where you can learn how to respond to failure, to be a great teammate, and to create success. Excuse me. While doing something and being a part of something that is bigger than yourself. I believe that a big part of our job as coaches is to use the arena of sports to help prepare our kids for life off the court and after high school. However, I was told by the administration that that is not my job, that is not their job, and is not the role of anybody at that school. If it is the case, then you are greatly mistaken as to the role and the impact that educators can have of any sort. On March twenty-eighth, I was fired in a conversation over the phone with no concrete reason given other than they wanted to take the program in a different direction. Upon my asking, my direct supervisor told me that he personally had never witnessed or heard me say or do anything in the past three years that would make you think I should not be the coach. Despite the athletic code explicitly saying so, I was never involved in any meeting that took place between a parent and/or a player and the athletic director. In fact, no parent ever reached out to me to tell me that there were any problems or concerns. The positive buzz and energy surrounding the program, not only within this community but in others, far outweighs the negatives. Did I have high expectations for the girls and the parents in our program? I sure did. Did I hold them accountable and challenge them to be better? Indeed. Did I always get it right? Absolutely not. And are there things that I wish I could have done differently? Most definitely. Anytime that you try to change a culture and establish new norms, not everybody is going to be on board. People many times resist change, especially if they see it as a threat to something that they want or which is their ideal of how things should be. Excuse me. But it's only through change and that being uncomfortable that it creates that any sort of growth can happen. That growth was happening within the girls' basketball program at all levels. None of us on this side of the table truly have any power to make change or to evaluate the areas for growth. But each of you on this side has been chosen to be there by members of this community because they believe that you'll have all of their best interests in mind. Not just the ones that think like you, look like you, and want what you want. It is no easy task indeed, but if you want to make your time in this position mean something and make an impact in your community, I challenge you to get comfortable being uncomfortable. Thank you.
And Jeff Sanders.
Hi. For those of you that don't know, my name is Jeff Sanders. I've been the assistant girls' basketball coach for the last three seasons. This is, in my opinion, most frustrating and sad for the players, families, and fans that have bought it, invested, and believe in the culture we have been trying to create for the past three seasons. When the next coach is hired, there now will have been three different head coaches in the past four years and four in the past six. The boys' program has had three head coaches in the past four years and four in the past five. It can't possibly be just the coaches that are always to blame. The players and the families at all levels, youth through high school and the alumni, deserve better than that. To start the season, Holly held a season tip-off meeting for all the girls and their families in CBA, which turned out to be a very inspiring and exciting night. At this meeting, wearing the same shirt I think she has on tonight, she mentioned that it was the fiftieth anniversary of Title IX and how far we have come and how far we have yet to go. Following the meeting, a man that is a coach of another sport who was not at that meeting went online to the group he runs and said in part that, quote, "This is ridiculous. She just needs to be put in her place. She is no good." Holly was obviously not very thrilled with all of this and what could be considered as a veiled threat. So she reached out to the administration. I believe they did speak to him, and as he backtracked some of his remarks online, he seemed to be more concerned that it would be viewed as a one sport versus the other, not what the true problem was. It's this type of stuff that we have had to deal with far too often. On more than one occasion this season following a game, some parents went out of their way to stare down Holly, Ian, and myself, and what I can only imagine was an attempt to intimidate us. It was so concerning that we would wait until the entire gym and hallway were cleared out before we walked to the bus together. This was the touch with the administration. While I do not know if there was a conversation that took place, I do know the behavior continued. At one point in our first year, I was physically cornered after a game in the dark, and another parent had to intervene and make sure I got safely to the bus. There were zero consequences for those offending parents. In the past three years, not one time has an administration member attended practice for more than five minutes, and they stop in and just talk about something, some random topic. This is even after Holly encouraged them to do so if they were having concerns. And while there was apparently some concerns by the administration this season about Holly and her coaching conduct and who knows what else, no one ever reached out to Ian or I to ask about our input or clarity on what did or did not happen. That's a lot of negative. I'm going to talk about some of the positives we did in three years. Hosted an annual tailgate party for the homecoming football game, collecting donations for Grace Place in New Richmond and Turning Point in River Falls. Hosted the Girls Got Game Clinic with UWO Claire players and staff. Conducted the first all-CBA girls' meeting to kick off the season. We had more wins this year than the previous three combined. We had two players named to the all-conference team this year and one last year. Coach Spoon won Coach of the Year last year as voted by the Middle Border Conference coaches. They don't just give that away. Coach Spoon was asked to speak at the Wisconsin Basketball Coaching Association Clinic in Wisconsin Dells. We served meals at Grace Place in New Richmond. For the third year, we get our annual spaghetti fee tip-off fundraiser at Parkside. We had players and fans volunteer to feed my serving children around Thanksgiving. We hosted a CBA United varsity games for every grade level. A varsity trip to Marshfield, which included making blankets and donating them to the Marshfield Clinic. She can play repping shirts to celebrate Title IX and SCC girls' basketball. We started National Girls and Women's Sports Day celebrations, which included hosting seventh and eighth grade girls' games at the high school and having an all-female officiating crew for that game. I've forgotten a lot of things that, you know, I can't count them all, but something has to change around here, guys.
And we have Ryan Mentor.
Hello. Thanks, Jeff. My name is Ryan Mentor. I live in Roberts. I have a wife and I have three daughters. Fifth grade, third grade, and first grade. And the girls have been in the basketball program here for, I don't know, two years, I guess, or whatever the earliest that they can join. So we haven't been around the basketball program forever, but I do have to say, this last, this last week that I found out that Holly and Jeff were not going to be returning next year, I was shocked and mostly disappointed. Man, this year, the amount of involvement that we've had and that we've seen Holly and her team embrace the youth as a whole program, it was phenomenal. We thought it was wonderful what they were doing. It wasn't just talking. It was the action that they did. I mean, the meeting that Jeff's talked about, where it was kind of an all-hands-on-back meeting at the gym, was great. I had goosebumps after that meeting, and it was, just the message that they were sending to the families and the kids. Not just varsity. I'm talking on the youth end. That's what she did, right? That's what their team did was extend beyond the gym floor and beyond high school-age kids, the younger kids, and to try and embrace this as a program. And I was very disappointed to learn that they will not be returning. And I thought they did a lot of good things. I know Jeff had a good list there. I don't have a list prepared in front of me, but it's just her character. And, I mean, she would come to the youth tournaments. We had a home tournament for fifth grade. She was helping at the concession stand when there was a spot that needed to be filled. I mean, she went out of her way getting colleges involved in camps for the youth, providing youth nights at local colleges to go and see. I mean, the kids were excited. So I'm disappointed, and I don't know, in the background really, but from my point of view and from my kids' point of view, very disappointed. So I thought she did a lot of positive things, and I hope that whatever replacement there is can be half as good as what she did for the program, in my opinion. So thank you for all the effort you guys put in.
We'll move on to highlight news. We've got District Solo Ensemble, High School Band Teacher Sean, and Middle School Band Teacher Ben.
Let's go to the booth.
There it is.
Oh, yeah. All right, well, hello. Thanks for having us again. For those of you that haven't met me before, I'm Sean Conway. I'm the high school band director.
I'm Ben Helmrich.
And this year, it was our turn to host the District Solo and Ensemble Festival at St. Croix Central, which I'm sure probably didn't make many headlines in any papers or anything, but there was a lot of stuff to go in here. We just wanted to kind of let you know about it and highlight some of the successes of our kids in this whole thing. So for those of you maybe that don't know, Solo Ensemble, it's basically an opportunity for students to prepare music individually or in small groups, which they then get a chance to perform in front of a certified adjudicator and receive feedback from a different voice than they might otherwise hear from. I'm sure not even notice that, you know, you talk with your own kids. Sometimes hearing the exact same thing from somebody else just makes it work, and it kind of happens with Solo Ensemble. It's really a great opportunity for musical enrichment for some of those students to dive deeper into their individual instruments. And then because of the way the festival is set up, we're allowed to meet the kids at their level and find appropriate challenges to help push them even farther. So each solo has a different level of difficulty, class A, B, or C. And they're rated, we'll show you examples of Rubric here in a second, and they're rated on specific musical qualities. So it's not just like they go in and they just kind of are trying to say, you know, you're really good. Here's why. They get qualitative feedback on where they can improve going forward, or they get recognized on the things that they're doing well. We're a part of, St. Croix Central is a part of a kind of a music conference or consortium, if you will, combination of local schools called St. Croix Valley Music Educators Association. And so together, you know, these were some of the schools we hosted. We worked together to provide honor bands, honor choirs at both middle school and high school level to basically do things that we could not do just on our own, or none of us could do on our own as individual districts. And so moving on to kind of an example, this is what the kids receive. So they've got five different categories. I only put three of them on here for the sake of a good picture. Then you can see that they talk about tone, intonation, accuracy. If you're in choir, you get like a choir-specific one. You're not getting rated on band things in choir evaluation. And the results are totaled one through five total, like you can see in that evaluation column there. And what happens is you're basically going for ball score. Think more points means more mistakes, more errors. Low score means a more perfect performance. And your goal is to try and get as low of a top number as you can there. You'll see that there's the rating of one, and then there's a one star. And this is underneath that A only. A is the most difficult type of solo that is out there. This is basically, you know, if you were to go see Minnesota Orchestra, this is pretty similar to the type of repertoire that they would be doing. It's on a list provided by the state of Wisconsin. And if students do well enough on those things, they get a special distinction of the one star, and they're eligible to perform once again at state. And it's not just like they walk in, they perform, they get, the judges silence, fill out a sheet of paper, and they get that later. They see a random number at the end of the process. There's time built in at the end of each performance for the judge to give some quick feedback and interact with the students. And so it ends up being a really, really cool experience and a great opportunity for, you know, students who are nervous to play by themselves or sing by themselves or with a group to to get out there and take another challenge beyond just being a part of an ensemble setting.
Yeah, and it's ranked like that. They all get a score on Rubric, but it's not competitive. So everybody, and that's what we remind the kids, we say, everybody who's in this building right now wants you to succeed. And there's one middle school or press scout or somewhere, and they say, this is the worst day of my life. Didn't go well. I said, buddy, I want you to do well. And I will know you met you two seconds ago, but this is all here for the common goal, just making good music.
Yeah, and so like there is that state. The state performance is kind of like an honor or distinction. You get this additional performance. It's kind of a like tip of the hat to you, like, great job, great effort, like, we want to reward you for that. But unlike maybe like a wrestling or a track where if the team gets enough points, the entire school or whatever goes to state, that's not, we don't have that same kind of thing. It's only the individual, like solos or small groups that earn the one star on those class A solos that then get to go to state. So just kind of understand some of those things there. So now, kind of what all went into this, it was our, like I said, it was our turn to host, and because we rotate this among the seven schools, we are off until 2030, which is very nice to think about. So the events were held on March twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. Schools submit their events and entries online. Everything goes up in the cloud. And then it became our job to sort where all of these things were happening and make sure that there were no conflicts, and you have to sort them, you know, like, we have, like, you would not want us necessarily evaluating choir performances, but we could do like some band things pretty well. So the same thing with our judges. They have specific areas of expertise that we want to make sure that they're in the right rooms for and evaluated. So it became our job to make sure that Ben had his three hundred and forty-four middle school events to organize and put in their proper place. And then I had five hundred and thirty-six for the high school that we got placed. And the whole thing, we're just in constant communication with a whole bunch of people all the time to just make sure all of this goes off well. So we, you know, talk to the local schools. We have a couple of schools that also like maybe have a conflict with their own local festival that say, hey, can we come here? Let's go fish shirt, talk to these people. We got local businesses involved to help with catering, to feed folks when we were here. We made a lot of trips out to BP to get pizza for concessions and things like that. Lots of coordination with our building administrators and custodial staff to make sure we're covered. Or Tanya was talking to me almost every day to make sure that we had like cash boxes and things ready and like facilities were all taken care of and all that. Classroom teachers, because we borrowed their rooms, Gene, we helped, kind of a nice feed helped them. They helped us. They had leftover wrestling concessions, and we were in need of concessions to sell, so we saved us a trip to Sam's Club, talked a lot to parents, and then even finally to students. A lot of getting around everybody. And, you know, we just left the meeting where we got to meet with kind of these schools, and, you know, the general vibe was they were really impressed and very happy with how everything went. You know, sometimes rooms and judges have a tendency to get really far behind because you're trying to avoid conflicts. Like, some people have kids that are doing band events and choir events, and they're in a large ensemble, and so you have to make sure that those kids aren't running into issues. And sometimes if they have people that are playing piano to accompany them, those accompanists are playing for like fourteen other kids, that you have to make sure that those rooms aren't like. So you're just trying to not to make sure to cross all the wires. Just a lot of really positive feedback from all the directors that we work with, all the accompanists were like the schedules and things that they had. They were happy with the rooms and the way that everything worked. They thought our facility worked very well for the event, just in terms of who could go where and everything like that.
Yeah, we had our numbers next.
Yep. So here's a little bit more of what that's like.
Yep, for all, it's everything that was happening for like a day and a half. Not everybody was aware. We had thirteen different sites, different classrooms. We used the band room. We used our auditorium space on that Saturday. Six schools came on Friday, six local ones from our conference. And then we had a couple of extra ones. St. Croix Lutheran likes attending from Minnesota because they like how we do things in Wisconsin. We had a homeschool student who lives in Roberts, was able to attend. We fit him in that day. I think that counts as a school. But all the other adults, they've played piano. We had fifty-seven between the two days, so that's a mixture between some of the directors, and a lot of the choir directors who play for their choir kids. Or outside, there's either parents who would help to know how to play piano. There's local people in the area between the two days, and almost sixty. And then the judges. So there's twenty-three judges that we got ahold of. We didn't find them, but the state association assigns them to us. We had, there's a mixture of current directors, retired directors. There's people that solely judge, but all qualified. And good to hear. Like you said, comments from someone that's not us, even though it might be the same. And they're all there trying to make sure the kids have a good time. So like you said, I scheduled, we had three hundred and forty-four Friday night. We had five hundred and thirty-six on Saturday, which is up from last year. We didn't really have these festivals two years ago when everybody went home early. And then last year, we were kind of starting to get in the swing of things, and now I think we're back where people are starting to register. We're starting to get the kids to buy a little bit more. So of those eight hundred and eighty events, some kids did more than one. Some of those were groups. So I'd say there was probably close to a thousand kids there between the two days. With these groups, we were filled really quickly because it was the weekend for spring breaks, and by the time we got the volunteer list out, it was pretty much a week. We built two hundred volunteer slots between parents and students. A lot of high school kids step up, take some of those slots where there was watching the doors and making sure people were on time. Borrowed a staff member from Baldwin out of their office to run numbers for us. They take all the scores and tabulate it all. When we were finished, when the judges were finished, concessions, most huge ones we paid off wrestling, and we got Gene to go stand some for us. Came out ahead on that. It was a good little fundraiser. And then all five of us were there. So Michelle Schmidt isn't here right now. Melanie Newman and Kara at elementary school, all of us here for both days. So it was a middle school night. It was a high school night. All put together. Sure, middle school, we sent between band and choir, we had nineteen that night. Class A was awesome. Eli Owen is a student who was just phenomenal. If you heard him sing last year at a concert, and then he qualified too. Separate from this, but he's going to go to Carnegie Hall next summer. They take a handful of kids all over the world and qualify. So the biggest place you could possibly perform in New York City, qualify for next year, which is awesome. And Class C is typical where middle school would be at, but we had a lot of kids that could go above and beyond it. It was Class B or Class A.
At the high school, we had, put a bigger emphasis on it this year than we have in few years past, and so we were up to thirty events. In Class A, we had fourteen students total, with a lot with that, ten with that one rating, four with the two. And then Class B, a number of these kids were the ones that were just like, oh, you know, I don't really know if this is for me. And so I was like, well, here, here's a piece that you can look at. You can figure it out pretty easily right now. Let's have you go, realize it's not scary, and then next year, you can hit a hard needle for those eight pieces. And so we were excited to have that many there. And then Class C, this was a lot of our freshmen kind of taking their first crack at it, out of this. And, yeah, and so even if somebody is like, they want to do this, but they don't want to get necessarily a number, we have a comments-only option as well for those two. So even if they just want to try and get that experience and get rid of the pressure of like that number there, like, that's always an option. So it's a really cool thing that we're excited about. So then I talked about that one star. We had three students from Central who earned a one-star rating, and so they get that opportunity to perform on May sixth for that UWO Claire. And that we had Lily Hanson, piano, on her piano solo. So she got to use the beautiful brand out in the auditorium. Lydia Hubbard, a sophomore for her euphonium solo. Brianna McQueen on her alto solo and her musical theater solo. We had the opportunity to get a chance to recognize these students at that all-school assembly we had last Friday. So it was cool to get those kids in front of their peers. And then last, this is kind of tangential to, this is similar but different to Solo Ensemble. I figure we take this chance to mention this too, but there's honor bands and honor choirs that students can audition for and hosted by the state. And they really take some of the top student musicians out there. They work with some incredible conductors from across the nation. They bring people all over the place. And it's a pretty serious setting when they're out there, kind of a step up from everything. It's really kind of a great opportunity for some of those kids to kind of get a taste of like, you know, how far maybe that they can take this and what other interests they might have. And the audition process is much more And the addition progress process is much more rigorous, you know, in addition to doing a solo. They have like some other, their vocalist, they have some like sightseeing or scaler type things that they have to do. If they're in band, they have to run through a ton of quick scales and then they have just, you know, put a sheet of music in front of you and say, okay, go. Um, and they do some sight reading and um this year we were really excited to announce uh uh junior Harper Demond's. Here to my son uh was selected to perform this year in the honors mixed choir. So he will get and as as a result, you know, he'll attend a camp this this summer, UW. Oshkosh, I think it is, Green Bay, Green Bay. Um, well, they'll go to a camp, kind of work on learning all of their music together. Um, in addition, it's kind of the work they'll have to do on their own. And at the Wisconsin State Music Conference in October. Um, they get a chance to put on a concert in their beautiful Overture Center there. So we're really excited. Um, just to kind of give you an idea of the odds and how difficult it is to get in. Twelve hundred and fifty auditions for, you know, five ensembles. So Harper is one of four hundred and twenty-six. Um, out of those, like, got one of those four hundred and twenty-six spots over those twelve hundred there. So. Really, really excited for all that he did. Just really proud of him and his hard work. And then lastly, I want to make sure that we publicly recognize a lot of people that helped us with this. Like I kind of mentioned already, our our admin team for letting us steal. Uh, their building, studio staff for dealing with us being there very late and making it difficult to get to the rooms that they needed to get done so they can do their jobs. They're really flexible with us. Uh, Tanya, again, for just helping us with all like the financial things that we needed to do on the budget and. Um, high school classroom teachers for less use their spaces. Uh, Sarah was excellent at getting all of the gift pay to judges. Um, and she was excellent about helping us get all those W nines set up for them, getting them added as vendors and being really clear with like. Timetable for checks and everything like that. So that was excellent to help, you know. Make it, you know, because we want the judges to know that we're running things well for them to be confident and happy with coming back to us. Gene Johnson helps us with concessions, Courtney Hawkins, we use Panther Catering for uh. Dinner for the directors and judges on Friday. We went to Parkside for dinner on Saturday. Uh, Mark Willink and Baldwin made sure our piano sounded great. Um, and our fellow music colleagues, like we're here right now, but like they were um. Instrumental, I guess you could say, in helping us uh, so to speak. Yeah, helping us, helping this all, you know, to be able, like, when we're running around checking off on things. Uh, just to be able to like say, you know, hey, we can do this, we can do this. They were they were all there, ready to step up the whole time. Mitch Donahue impressed a lot of folks because he figured out um how to get recordings for every person that performed in the auditorium. So if there were groups that performed there, we were able to send them later an email with a link to their group's recordings, which is just a nice cool thing for those kids to have. And then the music parents and like everybody who came and volunteered, like we had SEC SEC staff that came out as well to help out with things and it was. Like, um, like that was kind of for me, like, you know, I was really proud of my kids, but it was really cool to see the the music community kind of. Step up and just be so excited about like representing ourselves well um here and. You know, the one thing that would have prevented, that would have caused all of this to fall apart was not having the people that we needed to help and, you know. We were just blessed with riches on those days and we never had that as a concern at all that we didn't have enough people to run it. So we're just very thankful for that. And then lastly, for our for our kids who, you know. Were supportive of others, um. Catherine Lane, um, is one of our students and uh she is um. You know, got to take a risk to go on and perform a solo and there were so many students in the room there watching her perform. I knew it meant a lot to Catherine and her mom and that whole family. And it was just cool to see the musical community rally around them. Um, a lot of these kids, like this public thing isn't their favorite. Um, so the fact that they were willing to humor us and go out and still try this and trust us, we were really happy with too that they got involved in those things. So that's that's kind of all we've got. This is just. Kind of the remaining things that we have left on our calendar. Everybody else is kind of winding down, but we're getting the last couple of things kind of ramped up to finish up here. So. Yeah, that's it for. Thank you.
Right, next on the agenda is eighth grade career day. Middle school counselor Alyssa Pritchett and the eighth grade students.
Right, good evening. Hi, I'm Alyssa Pritchett, one of the school counselors at the middle school. And I am joined by five amazing young women here behind me. Some of you may recognize a couple of them. Um, but we're here to talk to you about the great work that the eighth graders uh did recently, probably over about six weeks' time. With their ACP project and also a career day. So I'm going to just give a quick little overview and then I'm going to hand it over to them. I just want to thank each of them and their parents for arranging this tonight because I know that they were running from volleyball to church and and all that. So thank you for being here. Uh, first we'll talk a little bit about what an ACP is. If you're not familiar, it stands for academic and career planning. And so this is a process that we put in place for all of our students, grades six through twelve. Um, and really it's an ongoing, like, always changing process. It's really student-driven, but. Provided with adult support along the way. Encouraging them to learn more about themselves, think about a future after St. Corin Central, develop some goals so that they can get there. And then what does that plan involve and how can we support them along the way? So all of the eighth graders completed an ACP project. Um, Mr. Jardine and I, we went in for a while and did some lessons and then Mrs. Fernbender and this Paulson took over after that. All of them creating an ACP slideshow, which they're going to show you in just a bit, just little snippets. And so please know that they put in a lot of hard work into this, but in essence of time, wanted to just kind of give you some highlights. And then also all eighth graders were given the opportunity to schedule an ACP meeting with myself or Mr. Jardine. Um, and a parent, and I just want to speak to what a privilege those meetings are. Because to be able to sit down with these students and hear from them, their passions and what they see for their future. And even if they're not sure and it's going to change a hundred times, just to be part of that journey for them is truly a gift. So. Without further ado, I'm going to hand it over to them.
Hi, my name is Lily Pupietz and I'm going to talk about the like. We learned about our different learning styles and our different multiple intelligences to help us discover what careers would be best for us. So for our learning styles, we took a test on Zello and it was just a couple of questions. And at the end it gave us the results and it was percentages of. How much we scored in each different learning style. There's auditory, tactile and visual. Um, I feel like my results came out very like true to who I am and I heard that a lot of kids felt that way too. And I felt that it was really important for us to do that because when you're going into a career, you need to learn how to like navigate their career. How and how, what you're going to do. And so I thought that part was really important. And then with your multiple intelligences, we get an activity. And it was, it ranked them from which one you're most like. And I thought that that was important because. What, because there's like different ones and different careers have those different intelligences. So you need to figure out which ones you're most like so that you can find a career that has those. So, yeah.
Hi, my name is Gens Truel and I'm going to talk about the interviewing part. Obviously, we're all expected to do at least one interview to help get one of the church plan for your career. So in my career journey, I learned that teaching education failed was the best fit for me. Even though kids have been one of my biggest passions in life, I'm still a little unsure about what exactly the teacher life is like. And more importantly, what age group is the best fit? In my research, I found the most helpful way to find this information was to interview different teachers. In order to do this, I reached out to two different teachers via email and text. The first teacher I interviewed was Abby Deltzer, a current third grade teacher at an elementary school. In this interview, I asked her a variety of questions covering the following topics. In these questions, I made sure I got a full understanding of what being an elementary teacher is like. From this process, not only was I able to go in depth during the questions, but I was also provided an opportunity to shadow her in order to get a full understanding. During this opportunity, I was able to go into Mrs. Diltzer's classroom and experience firsthand teacher life as a working, as working with students, observing how lessons are taught. And even got to see the behind the scenes of planning and prepping as a teacher. All experiences you cannot get by a simple Google search. The second teacher I was able to interview is Stacy Flanders, a fifth grade teacher at our middle school and a previous third grade teacher. In this interview, I asked the same questions as I did with Abby and got even more information to help develop my thoughts on what the teaching path is best for me. Here are some slides encompassing my interview research. I asked the same questions for both people and put different answers in the both slides. I was also provided with lesson plans as examples to what is expected of a new teacher.
Hello, my name is Emily Ruse. I'm going to be talking about the colleges we did for this. For our for our academic and career planning project, ACP, we were asked to research the college if our job required any type of degree. A college that we'd like to go to, of course. First, we were able to learn about these colleges. We interviewed someone who was or is currently employed in our career cluster. We also did research on what colleges are a good choice for our cluster. This helped us a lot because as eighth graders, we want to go to a college based on their sports team, their popularity and things that are important in our future. So doing this research helped us a lot to be able to know what the college is really like and if we'd like to go. This helped a lot because if I didn't research or ask questions about college, I wouldn't have known that there are several more colleges available to me than just UW Stowe or UW College.
Hello, my name is Lauren Hanson. I'm just talking about pros and cons. Um, also another thing we learned from our AC group, ACP project was the pros and cons of our careers, which meant we had to talk about. About on one of our slides, what are the advantages versus advantages of our careers? While doing this research, we're having an amazing help from Mr. Mr. Jardine and also Mrs. Pritchett. For helping us find our dream careers from the research, the planning and of course, the fun experience of the activity, activities of the different projects.
Hello, my name is Ella Burge. I'm excited to tell you a little bit about me. Um, some of my interests include theater, reading and art. Um, one of my main interests in life is just like writing. I really enjoy free writing and just like. Um, being me and impressing myself through writing. And I feel like this reflects quite a bit in um careers that I researched. Um, one slide that I created was talking about my, what my career choices are. And um another one that I created was skills required. So the three careers that I chose was tr- um, college professor, middle school teacher and an author. Um, college professors, I have always just kind of been like, yeah, that would be really cool to teach a college class. Um, a middle school teacher, I have idolized a lot of my middle school teachers. They've helped me through a lot in my life and I really appreciate them. And authors, as I said before, I just love to write and it's something that I spend a lot of my free time doing. Um, some skills that we had to research, um, I learned a lot about all of these careers, stuff that I did not know before. Um, college professors, I did learn that a career to us probably wasn't the best for me because it takes. Like a lot of commitment and I'm not very committed. Um, middle school teacher was a little bit less. Um, but not as much and that and I felt that that really helped me. And then authors was kind of the same, um, a lot of commitment. You have to be very um motivated in what you do and you always have to be rigorous and hard to be workable. And that's something I should sometimes struggle with. So um, I believe that a middle school teacher is better for me. And this project really just um helps me explore options and I learned so much from doing this, like more than I thought. So thank you.
That'd be great. Fun to listen to. So um, nicely done. Um, I'm just going to really quick share a little bit about our career day, which followed the ACP unit because it just kind of tied everything up. Um, so just a quick little overview, we were able to find fifteen different speakers for the day for our eighth graders. And you can see a list of all of the people that were able to join us there on the right. Uh, students were able to fill out a survey, um, kind of marking their top like four or five preferences. So we did our best to try to match up. Uh, their selections with what was available. So they went to four different sessions. Uh, each session was twenty minutes long. Um, and during that time, we just asked the presenters to share what does a day in life look like? Uh, what kind of education did you need? What are some of your pros and cons? What are some of the helpful high school courses? Um, and then leave some time for questions and answers. Many presenters brought hands-on items, tools, things from the workplace, um, samples, which were very popular with many eighth graders. So very fortunate to have all of those, those people join us for that day, including my very own the Hilberta, who stepped in at the last minute when we had a cancellation. Uh, just to kind of highlight some of the the different stations. Uh, the one in the bottom left corner actually was a flight nurse. Who joined us virtually, um, because she on call. So she told, she told me, she's like, at any point I might get a call and I'd have to like. Bust out of here, but it worked out. Um, and so that's just like I said, a snippet of the day. Some of the feedback, um, overall, very positive from both. The students and that quote over there from the presenter may be probably the most proud, just. Really proud of the behavior from the students and um wanting to be coming back and invited back in the future. I got a lot of good feedback from the kids as well as wanting more options and more speakers and um. So yeah, I didn't include a teacher and I got scolded for that. I thought you guys get to talk to your teachers every day. So. We learned a lot from the process. I think you can make it even better in the future, but overall I would say it was a great day. So huge thank you to um the admin that were always supportive of it. Um, Mr. Green and the crew that helped set up and take down. Um, my colleagues who may be voluntold, some spouses that they were going to come in and speak that day. And then um it's all the like organizing and stuff like that that I got a lot of support from. So. That's for me. Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is our GTO presentations. We have Emil Braille, Stan, Caleb.
My name is Kevin Flanders. I'm the the GTO teacher for the virtual school and the uh the high school. So um both of our young men tonight have finished up their testing. Um, they finished up almost all obligations to complete their program. The only thing they have left is their little presentation tonight and they must walk at the graduation ceremony this year. So. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. If you have any questions for them, if you're done, feel free to ask them. Thank you.
I was born in Tom, in August eighth, twenty-five, seventeen oh. My mother and I, sisters, we go almost every year. Drawn up by a ten, felt all the deals, looking for different states, including Arizona, Minnesota, Wisconsin. Obviously friends got harder to make, removing so much. So social anxiety. Yeah. And about a year ago, I moved here to Wisconsin for me to live my hand. And finish high school here and graduate. Made some friends here. My interesting passions are working on cars. Ever since I bought my first car at fifteen, I like working on it. Upgrading it, applying it. I just recently bought that car. You know, I can do whatever I have free time. Kind of pretty relaxing. I also like to ride dirt bikes and ATVs. Risky and fun, safer. Gives me a restful excitement. My strengths are having a calm mindset, appreciating the mechanicality, mechanically inclined, patient, drive a sense of humor. My weaknesses are the struggle planning motivation to do most things. System aren't better. Don't like talking to people usually. And where other people's been. G O two program is healthy, but essentially want me to graduate. Because I just started my first year, freshman year, then I moved to Utah during Christmas prayer. And then struggled with home life school in Utah for about two and a half years. And then moved back here to Wisconsin. And man, got me signed up into the G O two program, one of my teachers. And then skeptical at first, but then I got pretty ahead. And then I'm being able to graduate, so I'm graduating early. Perfect taking classes at Northwood. This year, I learned that you know, I may not think I could do something. I could just take the whole process slowly and do it piece by piece. Till it's finished, and then it doesn't seem too hard then. And then I took a welding class during high school and figured that something I could be really good at through my career. Future plans, ready to get a welding, to be creative from my points and then start my career as a welder. I've also thought about getting a degree in automotive repair. Because I also plan working on cars in my free time. I'd like to say thank you to my Aunt Jill, who's been a good supporter and influenced my graduation. Also like to thank the S C C's school board for giving me the opportunity to graduate on my graduation. My class. Thank you.
We'll get Sam off next. One thing I want to say about Caleb is he came in pretty far behind. And his work ethic is second to none. He came in and he worked every day. And I thought the work would be the hardest thing for him to catch up. But the, I think the speaking tonight probably was the hardest thing.
Do your job. It's not easy to get open to people.
I'm Sam Riley. Hi, as you heard, my name's Sam Riley. There's pictures of me and my family. So why I chose to do this program? I started homeschooling about sixth grade. My parents just took me out of school. And I always had a hard time being in school. It wasn't that I didn't like school. It was just that I got easily distracted. And I started homeschooling, yeah, I heard that one. And I started working in ninth grade at a small farm for about four hours a day. A Wisconsin kid, I guess. We all started working on a farm. I was still able to do school while I was working those hours, but after about a year, I started taking out a little more, so I started working eight hours. It became a little harder to keep up with my schoolwork. And so, but I didn't do it. I'm into eleventh grade. I mean, so it was pretty good. But by eleventh grade, I was just really ready to be done with it, but I was still credit deficient. And I wasn't technically on track to graduate. So I told my mom that I would like to just drop out of school. And she was not very happy about that one. And so my mom, she called the school and she's like, hey, my son's gonna drop out. Is there any other way he'd be able to graduate? And then we found out about the G E D O two program. And it sounded like a really good idea to me because it's a little less school, you know? But, yeah, just seemed great. And right now, I'm working a full-time job, and I guess I'm gonna be able to graduate. That's pretty cool. So my interests and passions, I love dirt biking. I started dirt biking when I was six and still doing it. And mostly, I like to trail ride, but we do a lot of riding around here in Wisconsin. And about twice a year, we go out and ride like Colorado or Wyoming, that area kind of area. And I like to snowboard. And as I said, when I can't dirt bike, I'm probably snowboarding. And I'm mostly in the park, which is like, just like the Jones and Rails and kept stuff. But honestly, the best part is just going to hang out with friends, you know? And then I love travel. My parents took me to a lot of different places when I was younger, so kind of like it's still been traveling in me. So and one of my favorite places we visited was museums, which is pretty cool. My strengths, I like to say I'm pretty patient. Sometimes, sometimes. I have a pretty good work ethic, and I like to say I'm pretty outgoing. My weaknesses, there's a few, like, because I had a few more up here, but gotta give me some credit. I get distracted pretty easy. That's, that happens. Sometimes I talk too much. Mr. Flanders came up with that. He helped me with that one. Which is true, it's true. I crack it a lot of times. It's some days, I tell you. And I can easily be more organized, easily. It's pretty, pretty easy for me to How has, how's it helped me? Well, I'm gonna be able to graduate, and that makes my parents pretty happy. I started to work a new full-time job, which is at a steel manufacturer. And it's pretty cool. And in the future, if I get a job, it'll be really helpful, probably on the form, a little bit. And it also just shows I was able to finish something, and it shows, and that just, that shows a lot of things. It really does. If you're able to finish high school, down the line, you're gonna, you're gonna be able to finish a lot more stuff in the future. And yeah, I'm gonna accomplish a lot of things. And what I've learned about myself this year, a little bit more about finishing school, it taught me not to just give up on stuff so easy. I could have just dropped out of school. I probably wouldn't have thought much about it at the time because we're stupid kids. But if you think about it, you can give up something that you spent eleven years on and just throw that all away. It makes it a lot easier to be able to give up on other things in life. Just isn't easy, so. And my success, my success this year, I got a new job, as you guys heard. I'm kind of a maintenance man around the gap place. I've been able to travel a lot more, family. Like I said, we like get around, we go splashing. Yeah. And yeah, I'm gonna be able to graduate with my class this year, which is really cool. I won't be behind, I'll be ahead, obviously. And I bought a new car, which is pretty cool, pretty cool. And my future plans, all right, we're gonna skip the first part. You guys know I'm gonna be doing some more damage, I guess. I'm gonna be working with my uncle at his truck dealership as soon as I can, as a salesman, which is really awesome. But honestly, for now, I'm just figuring everything out and deciding what I wanna do going forward, you know? And I look forward to spending my time learning new things, maybe getting a new apartment. That's pretty cool. And I also look forward to just be able to a little more independently and spending more time with my family and friends. And that's it. Thank you, guys. Thank you again for the program. It was really awesome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Sam also had an incredible work ethic. As you can see, he's not gonna be sitting behind a desk.
All right, moving on to number seven comments by board members and superintendent. So first, we want to congratulate elected board members Lance and Derek. Welcome aboard. So the next thing is we'll do the oath of office.
You're gonna go up for now.
Now, Erica said we should read it at the same time. Hi, Derek Miller. I'm Lance Robinson. Have been elected or appointed to the office to serve essentials of the state of Wisconsin. Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, and will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties that office best of my ability. So help me God.
Congratulations.
All right, so now we need to pick out some dates, times for new school board member onboarding. So I know Lance, that you are a part of that. If you wanted to go on or do it again. But I'm sure Derek. So Derek, you'll meet with Tim and I, Callie, and Jen, people at the business office. And we have discussed that we are going to consider remembering that for the mentors at level, so. I'll be able to, so. Well, I said that time up now. You guys wanna put that time up now or?
You wanna do it afterwards? I can, we can figure out what days of the week work best.
Yep, that's fine.
This is all through calendars.
Okay, so with respect to that, the CISA eleven and the Wasbod has new board member orientation in our windows.
And then, is it Thursday? Next Thursday?
Those are worth.
Yeah, the online one is on the twenty seventh.
Yeah. Seven to nine P M. Virtual.
Moving on to the joint task meeting meeting up at CISA eleven. There were events, Jeff, Dave. Just wondering about what you learned.
Some riveting stuff around school finance. It's always interesting, but you always learn something new every time you hear somebody talk about it. Definitely not straightforward.
I was, I've heard most of this stuff before and, you know, about the cliff financing, but with the S R funds and how the state's way behind. But one of the things that struck me was since nineteen ninety-three, they made little changes that I think had huge unintended consequences. You know, because when Tommy Thompson, I think, did switch funding of schools to supposedly sixty-six percent from the state. And we had revenue caps for a number of years. The budgets kept, you know, the funding of schools kept up with inflation. And then they made a decision, because all of those years, the increases per pupil were tied to C P I. And then all of a sudden, they said, no, 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 we aren't gonna do that anymore. We'll just decide every year. And we're like, three thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. Three thousand dollars a kid, per kid, below what inflation would have been since the early nineties. It's just, it's no way to run a school bus, yeah. And then just at one point, like every school was its own school district. I mean, that was an interesting thing that I didn't know. And that's, I've been kind of preaching at the CISA meeting, and I'll just say it here. I think seventy-five percent of the school districts had declining enrollment. And when I talked to Shannon Zimmerman, he kind of snuck in, because I was talking about the cliff financing. And he kind of snuck in at the end of the discussion about declining enrollment. And he said, yeah, I think the next thing we need to do is look at consolidation. And so I think from the state, there's gonna be a big push to consolidate schools. And I don't think that will be good for education. We will lose the local elected school boards that give life to the local schools. And I really believe that the answer to that is more shared services. So CISA now does the finance for a few school districts, you know, because they, you know, their school districts have four or five hundred kids. And so they have to have a superintendent and a finance manager for five hundred kids, you know. Three hundred. Yeah. Those are less than a hundred. So they, you know, they, to the extent you can share services, it goes to curriculum coordinator. I think we just have to be open to, as I'll say, financially well-off school districts to help other districts. Because ultimately, the state is gonna impose, as they've done in the past, where there will be consolidations. And I think we can avoid that if there isn't a bunch of financial savings by consolidation. Because when we, you lose your local school board, you lose a lot, I think. And so I just, I think that whole financial picture that was presented, if I think, and I, you know, I was involved in similar thing with CISA administrator, and that was my message to him, like, we really need to be talking to our PAC, our superintendents about openness to sharing where we can so that we can save money without eliminating school districts. Yeah, so, but I think that was, I think all the things that was talked about at this joint meeting supports the need to be as cost efficient as we can be without diminishing quality.
On that ride home that night, I thought about, you know, I mean, we have our own issues, you know, and stuff's pretty tight, but how lucky we are to belong to such a great community that is willing to always, you know, you know, we just passed a larger referendum that's gonna be huge for kids, and they were all behind that. So it's just pretty impressive that we belong to such a great community. When you hear about other school problems.
We're lucky to be in an area that's actually expanding to.
Declining enrollment sucks. That was a good, good meeting. And then the other thing that was announced there is Jerry Walters has been the CISA administrator for twelve or thirteen years. And he's been in the area for forty years. But Brandon Robinson, who's the superintendent of United, was selected to be Jerry's successor. And I think my personal impression is like, this guy, his whole career has been directed to do that CISA position. He's really, really good. And And the Unity School has been very well managed and was not well managed when he took over. So I think he'll be a good, a really good fit. And came from the ranks of the Supers. Yeah, challenging position as a leader of leaders. Yeah, so imagine coordinating was a thirty-nine, trying to get thirty-nine superintendents that all are the leader of their districts and get them all in a room. It's not just herding cats, it's herding feral.
D W O Claire, the Joint Finance Committee Listening Sessions, Joint Finance Committee, if you're not familiar, is made up of about fifteen legislators in the Senate, the House, in both parties, Democrat and Republican. And, um, as you can imagine, it's the deal of finance, like the budget. So they go around, now four listening sessions, um, amongst, I don't know, in the state, this one was Eau Claire, then one then Wisconsin Dell's the next state. And then they have one tonight in Monaca, and the first one is down south. But it's from a ten to five, they listen, people sign up, we got the early eight-thirty, and you sign up to speak, you get two minutes. And again, our United message is, superintendents was the fifteen hundred dollar ask per pupil revenue limit increase and fund special at a sixty percent, which is the brand that funded it thirty percent. Now, those were our two big asks. Um, and then, um, my message was about two things, referendum was one thing. I said, you know, it seems like some people say, oh, local control, rely on your communities and referendums to fund your school district. But I remind them, you know, um, that it often divides communities when you keep asking for money. And it pits, um, really the hub of a community, the school district, against their constituents. And I said, you know, please don't make referendums your financing model, especially when you have a six-point-one billion-dollar revenue surplus this year. So this by now really is the time they can do something. They can't say, we don't have the money. They have the money and then so. And then my second message was, I actually borrowed from one of our teacher meeting conferers years ago. And the teacher said, you know, please, uh, you expect us to be above average, but you fund us below average. Well, I use the same thing. You expect us schools to be above average, but you're funding us below average. So, you know, at least get us to average. And, um, those were, again, I had two minutes to talk. But, um, hopes are high, really, they are. The money's there. They, they hurt us. They know we have a fiscal cliff, but that's your money running out. Um, so we'll know about mid-May. And Jen's been working on developing a budget. Um, preliminary budget usually is in March, but because of financial budget, we're in the year, it'll be May this year.
Oh, thank you.
Quite a few superintendents that spoke.
Yeah, there, we, we did a little different strategy. Um, we did a group of about forty of us, stood behind the superintendent from Nielsville. Organized it, had one message, so you get five minutes if you're grouped with three more. So we did that. I stood with that group. Then Jerry Walters and Bruce Quentin from, uh, up in Omaha, um, us three spoke. Jerry started for three minutes and then I did the last minute or so. So, um, yeah, there were, um, at least fifty-some superintendents there. There were eight hundred and eighty, uh, when I was, I got to speak, speak finite one o'clock. There are eight hundred and eighty announced, uh, that were on the docket to speak. Eighty, not just individuals, but some of those are groups. So intrudiform is a university, right? So, um, you invite thousand people, which you don't have parking, so I got a parking ticket. Yeah, a lot of people.
All right, so we'll move on to referendum update.
Just a brief referendum update. We'll keep that as a running agenda item for the next fifteen months or so. Um, but you may have seen them mobilized a little bit with trailers and the fencing, the job trailers are on site at both elementary and the high school. Started some excavation at the high school, tore out the track surface and on a third of the football field. Um, last week, obviously, got everybody pretty excited about spring actually being here. And, um, but the spring isn't necessarily helping, but, um, talked to Eric almost daily, and he said, it's not slowing down. Uh, J. Austin excavation, um, so, and they're relocating, uh, the, the gas and the power at the elementary. That is one of the main things to do before they can start digging, so, you know, if you have anything to add, Greg?
No, I'm just going on. Gas is moved, electric is in the week.
One of the issues that came up and Jen called me. We bought that house next door and there had like three parcels that we had. And originally the village was like, well, you can't get a building permit because part of the building is in the township. And it's like, well, the existing building is in the township. We aren't, you know, we aren't even going into the township. But they, the village asked if we would to have it, the school property annexed into the village. Cause they have a policy that they don't extend sewer beyond the village boundaries. Well, whenever we did the last school, a couple of school projects, it just was overlooked. And they expanded sewer into the school, but, uh, so we said, sure, you know, we'll annex. And it doesn't make any difference, we're not a taxpayer, so it doesn't change any tax thing for either of the. But, uh, we had to get it, cause we have three parcels, we had to have a surveyor. We hired Joe Granberg to survey it. And as we knew when we bought the house next door, the village of Roberts surveys and plats are all screwed up. So I just got Joe's initial report yesterday, and it, this will fix all of those sins. And there's nothing of issue, but it's kind of an interesting thing, cause we were able to get the village to issue the building permit, which they have to issue the pill, building permit, but they don't actually inspect. It stayed inspected. And, yeah, so, but they said, no, if, if you would commit to do the annexation, which we said, certainly, we don't care. So we understood that, but that would have been, I mean, cause it takes probably two or three months to finish the annexation. It would have delayed it, they'd not been willing to issue the building permit.
Probably just with all the snow this winter too, after talking with Joe, he's like, I can't even get out and find any of the markers. So really, it wasn't until last week that he was able to actually get out and start working on, you know, plating it and, and what he needs to do to.
We work with a lot of surveyors and Joe really does a nice job, and he found some monuments that other surveyors hadn't found. So he, he does a really nice job.
Nobody shed there on our property or?
No. We lost some trees in the deal.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, next is staff appreciation breakfast plans for Wednesday, May tenth.
Yeah, so I coordinated with Angie already. And the, the elementary, middle, and high school food service staff will make breakfast for the buildings. Then the high school will also make breakfast for Trinity, the district office of the bus garage. Um, I'll pick up for those locations and deliver. And then usually, we just have the board members split up and visit the buildings and have breakfast.
What time do we expect?
If you're available, this is where I usually just kind of coordinate, say, I'll take the high school, I'll take the middle school.
I'll take the elementary school.
I, I can be wherever you need me to be, so I'm flexible.
Thinking I should probably not go to the middle school and embarrass my daughter. Are you going elementary?
I'll go to middle school with Lance, cause you and Josh usually like to do.
I'll be at that school.
Derek? I was really hoping that you weren't gonna call on me. Uh, it doesn't matter, I can do elementary or middle. Sounds like there's plenty to do at high school, huh?
Or even, yeah, elementary then?
Sure.
Dave and Derek, elementary, Lance, and it's middle school, Jeff, Josh, and Erica, high school, slash deal, slash bus garage, slash Trinity.
Thank you. Moving on to get those invitations by guests and staff members. We've got the food service report by food service director Sandy and Sherwell representative Monica.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for having us. I'm glad we have superintendent Erica online. My slide guy.
Slide show.
Slide show real. All right, here we go. The spring food service update. I know, isn't it great? I'm Sandy, staff or reason, the food service director. I, I'm new to the school this year, this is my first year. And Monica Panazal, I'm the area director. I support Sandy. Um, I'm also very new to this district. Um, the previous area director has moved on from the company. And so right now, I'm interim, uh, support for, for Sandy. Um, we're, don't know if that's gonna become permanent or not, but, um, regardless, she is well-supported. Yes, I am. Next slide, yes. Results. So I thought we'd give you some average daily student participation as to where we stand now versus pre-COVID. When people, when students and families are paying for meals, um, I can help you with this? Sure. So I think the, the easiest way to consume these numbers is to understand how many, on average, how many students are eating breakfast. How many students are eating lunch per day? So this is, these are, uh, annual averages by year. And, uh, the percentages are just the percent of enrollment for those, uh, for those meal parts, for breakfast and lunch. So I wanna point out that the two years in the, in the middle, um, are COVID years. Those are meals that were served free to every student, um, both for breakfast and lunch. That was set by U S D A. So that's why you will see a swing, um, in upward direction for those two years. And then this year was the first year that families went back to, um, full pay or reduced meal prices. Um, and so you, you do see a little bit of a drop off. But lunch, I want, the great thing is that our lunch number is higher than pre-COVID. That's, that was our goal, you know, in many districts that I work with, we wanted and we're very hopeful that for the, the students that we were feeding, um, during the free, uh, COVID times. Uh, we wanted to make sure we were trying to like capture, recapture some of those and reengage them with the program. So we are feeding a li- a little bit more. Um, I think we do have opportunities at breakfast. And that can be looked at with principles on maybe different service models and, um, and things. There's a, a wide variety of things that can be customized to each school to create more opportunity for students to participate and get a, a well-balanced breakfast, um, at the start of their school day. So, uh, and then at the bottom, this is just, um, understanding what kind of adult, um, sales that we have. Uh, participating in our, our food service program, so just a daily sales average through, um, for these four years. So we're on the upswing. We're on the upswing. All right, on to our customers and smiling faces. Here's some pictures that I took. As you can see, I took pictures on a very warm day, and because everybody has shorts on. Um, but the kids are all happy. I had a lot, a lot more pictures to share, but I kind of chose the ones that didn't have blurry, um, to help. But, um, in some of the slides, my cashier and Jackie and Lisa, the server, um, next slide, please. Uh, here's some middle school customers. Uh, they were also very eager to have me take some pictures. I noticed that I don't have any girls in the picture, so next time. Thank you. Uh, high school customers again. Um, I, I have some special, uh, needs students that are really good customers. Um, they come in and, uh, they wanted me to take their picture. Um, this slide talks about a lot of things that are going on in the program. Discovery Kitchen, our discovery, uh, yes, kitchen is a program that Sherwell's has for helping kids learn about food. Um, I demonstrate things in both of those, um, pictures, which are not great pictures for the actual kitchen display. Um, I have it this way, so you put it up and it's like, wow, what's going on here? So at the top picture, we, um, tasted Greek seasoned beef for our euros. And I also had homemade tzatziki sauce. Kind of a talk to get them to try the tzatziki sauce, and I'm still talking them into, to trying it. Um, we had it today. But I'm slowly gather, gathering more, more students to really like that. Um, at the bottom, let's taste overnight oatmeal. So two days before, um, our national breakfast, uh, celebration, I went in and we tasted. I had tasted overnight oatmeal, which you mix it with, um, cinnamon and honey and yogurt, and you let it sit overnight. And then you put fresh bananas inside, and then you drizzle a little bit of chocolate chips on top. Um, the picture that I have there, there was probably about a hundred and twenty kids in the dining room. And I'd say eighty-five percent of the kids tried it, seventy, sixty to seventy percent of the kids really liked it. I had kids coming up and telling me, we want this on the menu. Can you put this on the lunch menu? That's a little stretch too far, but we did, and we were able to put it on the menu this month, and it was a huge success in the end. So that's really, it's gonna stay on the menu next slide. We celebrate in National Breakfast Week at the, at the elementary school. Um, that is a annual thing that happens. Down in the left-hand corner, I have the Fuel Up Place sixty ambassadors from the fourth grade helping. Handout, I had little stickers for the kids that took breakfast, and all we served was oatmeal, hot oatmeal. And for the toppings of the oatmeal, we had fresh, we had strawberries and blueberries and warm cinnamon apples. And I can't even see what else. Oh, we had raisins and raisins. Not a big, uh, taker on those. But, um, it really introduced the kids into a healthy cereal, it's evolved, it's kinds of sugared, kinds of cereals. Um, winners, I am able through Cool Schools, which is a program that all the different types of Pillsbury and General Mills. If you get points when you order stuff from there, I was able to get some, um, portable G V L, uh, uh, Bluetooth sneakers for the high school, and then I all want, also one for the middle school. So you buy, you have lunch, you get a ticket. So I was able to get two of those. I have another one, excuse me, I have another one, um, that just arrived in the mail. And I have another, um, raffle at, at middle school. New salads at the high school. So we have a buffalo chicken salad that's like, we serve three times a week, which is a huge success. The new strawberry chicken salad, uh, was great. We make our own homemade strawberry vinaigrette at the high school. Uh, and I realized that I didn't have anything for vegetarian students. Um, so I came up with a vegetarian chef salad. We also have the fun lunch that we prepackaged. And I've also started offering more proteins like beans and so on, uh, for them to be able to get a protein. The newest on the go, um, uh, entree that we have is a, um, cup of yogurt with homemade granola that we make at the high school with blueberries and strawberries. And so that's a complete meal. So it's a grab and go type of situation where it has your fruit, your protein, and your grain. Next time. Uh, the new laundries that we have at the elementary school is a homemade chicken and bean burrito. Ruth and I were really truly surprised at how many kids really liked it, and so that's gonna stay on the menu. And then, of course, on the breakfast menu, we've put the outrageous overnight banana and chocolate chip, uh, oatmeal. The new entrees at the middle school, so the cheese steak hoagie, so the cheese steak over brown rice, which was a shock to me. Um, you'd think that the kids always wanna have something on a bun. Um, when I had it at the high school, fifty, it was a fifty-fifty that they liked to have it over brown rice. So I brought it to the middle school, and it was, it was a success there too. Um, nacho cheese walking tacos. Uh, Frito Lay has now come up with a packaging for their chips where you open it up and it's a bowl. So you can just put all of your fixings in there for a walking taco, Fritos, nacho cheese, and Tostitos. We also have chicken fried rice that we make homemade at the element, at the middle school, and a popcorn chicken mass potato bowl. Just like at, um, the dirty fried chicken. Staff recognition. Um, Charles has a cheers program and a chat that I do every single, um, month. It's our communication, help in training. Um, takes about fifteen minutes. We talk about safety and different things that are going on. But Charles has started, uh, a cheers, which we are able to celebrate our, our staff. And here, each month, I am celebrating somebody for their, um, fun, resilience, responsibility. And, I don't know, um, but it, it just, it's one way for each team to kind of celebrate for each person, what they've. I know. Um, but it it just is one way for each team to kind of celebrate for each person what they bring to the team. Updating equipment. I am so fortunate, and we are so fortunate to have a strong food service balance, that I have been able to replace some equipment. The, everybody, all all schools got two double-stacked ovens, as you can see in the pictures off to the right. I was able to get a double-sided milk cooler for the middle school, and as I am Carol Merrilling, the um beautiful new double-door refrigerator that I wish I would have known about in my earlier career, because the storage goes all the way down to the bottom because the compressor is on the top, not at the bottom, forcing all of the air up. Next slide, please. What's next for Roberts Elementary? Um, I want to mount awnings over the serving lines to really draw attention. Um, at the last school that I was at, they had them and they had um like the painting would be like the Panther Cafe over both of the signs with with school colors. I'm working with three different awning companies in the cities to have somebody come on and take a look at it. I'm working with Greg and we are installing um, or I'm hoping we're installing alarms on the walking coolers and the freezers at all three schools so that Greg, we're getting an alarm. Well, if we dip under a certain thing so that we don't come in on a Monday, and we've wasted everything in the in the cooler. I can't read the demo, but we're replacing more condiment cart at the middle school. Um, you can't remember the thing, the hotlines, hotlines. Oh, that's right. So we're replacing the uh hot wells and two cold wells at the elementary school. Middle school, we are going to replace the condiment cart that we have now. Um, we're placing the old uh serving uh small wares, and we're also working on getting the walking cooler freezer at the high school. Um, we're installing the alarm. I'm replacing the double-stacked oven pizza oven that we have there, and I'm replacing the grill at the high school, which is the other students' opening. Um, also, we are replacing, purchasing a double-sided condiment cart, which is greatly needed. We are going to start summer feeding at Roberts Elementary. With the census, it has, that village has dropped below a certain level that we can offer free meals zero to eighteen um during the time. So we're, we've chosen to do it during summer school, which is June fifth to the thirtieth. Um, I've got to talk, I'm still talking my way through the the contract. I'm going to talk to somebody at the state about serving Friday when we don't have school to just the students that are at the um kids' camp. Um, I think that's it. There we go. Any questions along?
What do you do with the old equipment?
Um, we were able to find somebody, some of the stuff was not in in that great a care. So we were able to get somebody to salvage them out, and they came and picked them up, and so they didn't take up space in the garages and to take them away.
It was good.
I had lunch with my schooler one day.
I appreciate that. And I'd like to invite all of you to come and have lunch with me or at the school. Um, and uh enjoy some of the things that we do have. I'm very proud of it. Thank you.
Financial reports. Are you excited?
Well, it used to be like, it seemed like it was at the beginning.
No, but it's great here. Everybody, yeah.
A lot of great stuff. A lot of people so excited.
So bank account balances as of March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Assistant State Bank checking, one million six uh sixty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventy-seven cents. Uh, Assistant State Bank money market, four million, five hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars and ten cents. Fund forty-six, we're holding the balance of fifty-four dollars and eight cents. Uh, suicide prevention, seventeen thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars, fifteen cents. Uh, fund thirty, whoops, yeah, fund thirty-nine, we've got a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. A hundred and fifty-seven, eight hundred and forty-five dollars and five cents, sorry. Uh, one forty-nine, seventeen million, seven hundred and seventy-three dollars, seven hundred and seventy-three, two hundred, two thirty-six. For a total fund balance of twenty-three million, five hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty-one cents.
Thank you, Ben. We have a motion.
Make a motion to approve the financial report.
Second.
So Dave first and Jeff second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. All right, financials are good. Um, next, moving on to consideration of consent agenda. And the approval of curricular modifications. We have um three full-time and four part-time to enroll in our virtual courses.
Move through consent agenda as published.
Sorry. All right, so first is Jeff and second is Lance. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Right, consent is asked.
Administrative reports, food and enrollment update. Um, we have one thousand six hundred and twenty-two students attending in person uh as of this month. And we have twenty-four percent of our students that qualify for free or reduced lunch. And nonetheless, the point out is just a number of students uh in virtual full-time, which are resident students, is at fifty, and seventy part-time. And then lastly, open enrolled, all strictly open enrolled students in virtual charter school are at two hundred and fifty-eight students.
Thank you. Moving on to the key work of our school board. Dave has that for us, where we do student staff community recognition.
I'd like to recognize Owen Losley. Owen, thank you for representing us so well as a student athlete, as you were in first team academic all-state honors through the Wisconsin Wrestling Culture Association.
I'd like to recognize Teague Holder and Noah Newsbaum. Teague and Noah, congratulations on earning second team academic all-state honors through the Wisconsin Wrestling Culture Association. I'd like to recognize Jacob Behrens, Parker Shackleton, Emma Osaguetto Weiss, Maverick Costric, Hayden Buckle, Garrett Galong, Brock Swenson, and Trent Holden. Congratulations on earning honorable mentions as academic all-state students, athletes by the Wisconsin Wrestling Culture Association. I'd like to recognize Jacob Behrens and Kaitlin Carlson. Congratulations on your recognition as Synchro Central's representatives at the NBC Scholar-Athlete Banquet and Ceremony. You have done an amazing job achieving in both the world of athletics as well as academics. Thank you for being such positive members of our school. I'd like to recognize Lily Hanson, Lydia Hubbard, and Brianna McQueen. Congratulations on earning a one-star at the District Solo and Ensemble Festival and earning your trip to state. Good luck on your performance at the state solo and ensemble. I'd like to recognize Harper Dubon. Harper, congratulations on your audition and acceptance into the twenty-twenty-three WSMA State Honors McQuire.
Congratulations, everyone. Thank you for reading that. Moving to core agenda items, designate uh board members to hand out diplomas for the twenty-three graduation ceremony. There's three of us that have seniors. Jeff, where?
Yeah.
Vince and Josh and myself. Um, you want, you want to do it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sure Josh does.
Yeah.
Okay. Cool. So we're with three, we can wait.
So that's Josh and myself will do it this year.
When will diplomas be ready?
We're waiting on them right now. We just had a graduation meeting for updates today. So we're still.
It's the twenty, May twenty-sixth, this is ceremony.
Do you actually get one? Is it actually coming? The thing you handle?
No.
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 Yeah, I was gonna say. I wasn't sure if I graduated ever.
Uh, moving on to selection of board members to serve on committees for the twenty-three, twenty-four term. And there are teacher meet and confirm, support staff meet and confer, and um
wage and benefit, but we have to say this year. And then, yeah, then the strategic planning committee. Wondering if you want to consider that, but um we could take one at a time, I guess.
Well, I think we talked about what we want to have as committees. Those aren't set in stone, right? I mean, historically, we had, you know, going back, we had the teacher team that was met with union, and then we had another team that met with fifteen different groups. And then we didn't have a union, so then it was meet and confer. And, you know, you just have, I think, last teacher, we had two people there.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I think it's important that we do that. Um, and I think it's important to have staff have an opportunity to speak to the board, but we have one group that does them all. And, you know, if teacher and then, I don't know that we need a wage and benefit. We haven't been
That's always the meat as needed, and we haven't needed it.
Yeah. I think if we need it, but we should start it then and decide who should be on it.
Do you think, like, so usually our meet and confers are like after-school hours? If we had periods that he, I don't know, just said brain, like at each school, do you think we'd get more? Like where we had like a time at each school where some of us came and we're open to a room where they could just kind of trickle in? I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be good for the the staff, obviously, convenient.
Um, it's always been teachers, too.
Yeah, I mean, it comes during your prep or lunch, or right?
It's not like a long conversation or something.
You would have to be there.
Yeah.
Board, board members, always a hangup, you know, everybody had day jobs. But if there is a willingness in a committee that can meet during the day, certainly be open to that.
I don't know. I I just like to try and make stuff as easy as possible for them.
Really, at two, like, I mean, they've got pretty well intended typically, two, two last year and and not many support staff either, because the referendum kind of took care of wages and benefits, which most people want to be confirmed.
Some of that's still set in stone, right?
I mean, for the most part.
The most, the wage part.
I mean, I'd be able to, I have flexible schedules, so I can come during the day. And you need, you need support staff.
You're proposing having one.
Well, I'm asking if that doesn't make sense to just have one.
It just is.
And then report back to here.
Yes, I mean, they always report, they don't have any authority. They're just, it really is a listening, yeah, listening.
Jen and I are there. And then do uh strategic planning. I like that idea a lot. And I think, you know, we've tried to do a committee of the whole. That's one of the reasons we did the second board meeting. But it's been more education, team building, and not really strategic planning, right? And so I could see a smaller group, not doing the strategic planning, but designing it. That you'd come back to the board, maybe involve, you know, maybe we want to do some stuff on tech ed and involve that community. Maybe it's involving the business community in something, but have it, that group would work on designing it and having monthly meetings. And that's, that's where I would go with it and have.
And do the brainstorming of uh to get it going.
And kind of setting like, here's what we think, bring it back to the board and say, yeah, we agree. But so you can do the thinking.
Yeah.
I don't, your memo suggested that they because it wasn't a majority, where I think it was the board committee, you have to post it. Which is fine.
So anybody could show up.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, it's not just, you know, like I said, it makes it, I think that's why it's always typically been three.
Yeah.
But I guess we do post, even though.
And we do minutes.
And when we remember, we called meeting to order and adjourned.
So that's good, then you don't have to limit to three. Because we, we need the whole.
Yeah, I personally, I don't like the whole, but I think it's more efficient.
Hard enough to get all seven at every board meeting, I imagine.
If, I guess, playing off that idea of brainstorm a little bit, it'd be nice to have, you know, one or two that are responsible for maybe setting the agenda for that evening. Um, because I do think there's value in, you know, not just us seven, but going into, if you're talking about a technical education, there's either board members or community members that are going to have expertise in that area, but you still, I think, to your point, need somebody responsible for initiating.
Yeah.
A chair, like, yeah.
Yeah, gotta be structured. And I was careful not to reply all, but I do strategic planning professionally for clients, and you, I really strongly feel that the best strategic planning has a outside facilitator. And it could be Lee, but there's other people that do strategic planning for school districts. And that would be the facilitator. That, you know, this committee, I think you have a chair and set the agenda, but I think having the guidance and process of a outside person is super helpful. It's just too hard to facilitate as a member of the board or my two cents. Yeah, but I like the idea. That's how we, you know, have moved up in the, you know, ratings of school districts, because the board was very purposeful. This is where we want to go. And it filtered down into the classroom.
One example, five years ago, we said wage and benefit, and I was saying, if we've all recognized our staff's underpaid, right? Educators are underpaid. Talked about it, talked about it. Let's do something about it. Let's think outside the box. Right? We always stop that, well, you don't have the money. Let's push beyond that wall and get crazy, right? And then this idea was born, and, you know, everywhere, passing a referendum four years later. I just kind of a crazy idea. And I know there's a strategic plan, right? There's a paper, much like provision and mission and your pillars. And I I envision this more more uh like concrete things.
Yeah, yeah, like, you know, not so.
What are we gonna do?
Philosophical, like, do.
I mean, it was very. And we might, we might look at some and say, no, it's fizzled out, it's not possible. But we looked at it. You know, when we, I don't know how long ago, but we've said, you know, we want to be in the top ten school districts in the state as measured by that report card. And we, then the admin team said, okay, well, how do we do that? You know, one of the measures is ACT scores. Well, how do we improve ACT scores? Well, we better do more prep, and we better better do this. And we saw, you know, then you get very purposeful.
The three swim lanes.
Yeah. And so I I think so I think we could have a committee, that meet and confer committee, and a strategic committee.
Just one meet and confer, some staff and teachers, just that's what I'm kind of thinking.
I don't think, then you hear every, then that group can hear all sides.
We can do it, try it this year, and I'm like, well, that was a fiddle, or.
I mean, I'd be willing to take a day. Be good one, so.
I love to take a day off.
We could go to the high school and have lunch. Be happy to get back to your other job.
You can't take a day off. I'll never get my mail.
That's good. So do we want to, you want, you want to try to say, like, this is a committee, or is it like name folks on each, or just say whoever can make it, designate a location.
When we had committees before, the board president kind of talked to people and saw which ones they wanted to be on and did an appointment, and that's the way it worked.
If you did the school one, you got to cover three schools in a day. You know, so you could divide up, maybe be more efficient, or you'd have to do like about three hours in each school.
Yeah. I think it's healthy to have the same people here and the same thing.
Yeah.
And we don't, I mean, you could do three hours in the elementary and a different day do three hours. And, you know, they don't have to all be in the same day. And, you know, they don't have to all be in the same day. Might be easier to take a couple hours off for some people.
Is it easier to take a couple of hours off or just a full day?
If you did a few hours at each school, would you, within three hours, would most everybody be able to be? Free with their schedules or not, so.
Yeah, it'd be challenging, right, because some folks only have proper one thirty, right?
I mean, the last thing I'd want to be is a disruption or anything like that.
I mean, it's like a three fifteen.
That's kind of what we did, but a lot of these.
No, it was right after school.
Take good places and.
How many groups are there? Does it?
No, more than that. For support still.
Yeah.
Switched up PD days.
Well, you can figure out, you have a committee, you guys can figure out the best way to get in.
Cause your cooks would be in, your lunch staff would be in at the same time at all buildings, right? So that would be difficult then.
The, the thing with the lunch staff is, I wouldn't say primarily all of them on, by one thirty, one forty-five each day. So. I've never been on that part, how many cooking staff come to a meet and confer?
Well, when they want it.
Yeah, thirteen, four to six. Out of twenty?
Well, we can do it the way we used to.
And then they can talk amongst themselves and send a representative.
That's what they do.
I just want it, just to be the most convenient for them. Seem open, I mean, sometimes coming up to the office is just kind of. Well, just, yeah.
I would say let the committee decide. And you could try to schedule it all in one evening or typically spend two, you know. Teachers right after school and support staff.
So let's just pick a date and then. Well, I don't think we have to even pick a date, just to get the committee members, right, and then let the. Then the, that committee could figure out when and how to do it best and.
You know, try to shoot for early, early May first.
So we don't have any, we don't have any meetings to decide any of that before then. I, I'll just say, I'd like to be on the strategic planning. Committee and I've, you know, I've done the teacher negotiations every year for twenty-six years. And, you know, they have been on wage and benefit, but I'm happy to step down from that. I don't know if people take that. I know that usually we, I mean, it seems like we cover everything when we say support staff and the teachers, but. Now that we have some. Coaches that aren't teachers, should they get included in a group too?
Certainly could.
Right, I mean. You know, yeah, yeah, we never have.
And we certainly could add that.
Yeah, non, non-staff coaches. Okay, go to that Kelly. So I got Jeff, some strategic, Lance.
I jumped Jeff there.
I'll do meet and confer. Erica.
I'll do strategic planning for sure.
I think board president should be on the ex officio of.
I would like to be in both.
Dave.
I'll do meet and confer. Strategic planning, Derek. Josh is a meet and confer. Leave him open, yeah.
Appointment of the.
No, that was, that was gonna be Jared.
I, I, I read that briefly, I was like, oh, I'll funny with that brief.
All right. Definitely, uh, the rep to the twenty-three C S eleven annual convention.
I'm gonna be there, so I'm happy to do that.
So Jeff will be our rep.
I think it's June fifth, I think it's the, yes, today.
Moving on to D with the consideration of approval for contract for lawn care services for summer twenty-three, twenty-five.
So mid-March, we sent out a request for proposal to five different local vendors for lawn care services. And we also posted it on the district website and told the due date of those proposals, I think it was like April tenth or something. Um, we had three guys that came back in. One of those bids didn't, they did not have the option of doing the rolling for us, as you can see from the, from the summary. Fern's Lawn Care was able to do everything and they also were including some free roundups. And dispatching of the baseball and softball fields, if they were awarded the contract for all three sites. And then Green Touch was the other one that could do all of the requirements that we need. Um, you can see that Fern's Lawn Care was quite a bit cheaper. Twenty-nine thousand for Green Touch compared to about nineteen thousand for Fern.
And they've been doing it, haven't they?
Fern has been doing it for the last three years for us and I think even before that, they did certain things. Yeah, so they've been a really good partnership, they're, they work well with Freg, so we are recommending that we go with Fern's Lawn Care.
What areas was it again then?
Um, so with Fern's, they will round up the high school athletic fields. And then they'll dispatch the baseball and softball fields if they're awarded the contract for all three sites, so they'll include those items for free.
That was all considering that we have a lot less fields this year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we did sit down actually with Jared, he has a program that he uses online. And we measured all the different spaces excluded like the football field and some of the other areas that we know aren't going to be under construction. There were certain areas that we weren't quite sure about, but we can, you know, once the construction is complete, we would always be able to add those. Spaces then.
It's kind of nice that the company that we've been using is a little bid. I'll make a motion to approve, uh, Fern Lawn Care for summer services.
So I guess. Any more discussion? So Vince first, Lance second. All in favor? That passes, set date for teacher meet and confer.
Most to, who's that?
Do we like May tenth? We got breakfast that day. Wednesday's work best for me is our schedules.
There's the title Wednesday.
And you can take the whole day up, because you're gonna come to breakfast at the.
And teachers all same. And coaches is trying to do it all started and maybe at least communicate with you guys, like, what time can you start and. Then go accordingly.
Do we not have a, a board meeting on May tenth?
No, it's the next week, yeah, seventeen.
So you'll get, can, can Kelly just get a sign up list or something like every?
Coordinate that with all the different groups.
I did too.
Moved it to.
The seventeenth.
Yeah.
That's right.
So what time did you say most cooks are done? Like, one thirty?
One thirty or two.
So should we try to start it? Should we start around two o'clock, our first, the first spots? Yeah, make that work. I guess Josh is just gonna be voluntold. He's married to us.
And we said, Ed, two?
Starting at two.
Typically, we're sharing the expected pay percentage increase, are we gonna be able to do that on May tenth?
We close.
Probably not, no.
No, I think we should wait until after the board meeting. Um, we have in years past, we have met with them ahead of time and then just followed up.
Yeah, I think.
But we can.
But you don't have to meet, I mean, to just announce the district-wide increase, we don't have to meet with every group, we can just. You can send out a communication that based on the state funding formula, we expect to do this.
Yep, and that's kind of what we've done in the past is just send out an email to all staff and then of course.
Okay, moving on to the consideration of approval of the second readings.
So GH and I, um, I want to point out, there have been amendments and edits since the first reading. And Kelly highlighted all of those changes, so I'll give you kind of. The executive summary, uh, the changes to the, um, to the, um, LOUDY system. Where, you know, again, our lawyer said you need to add how would be select Wisconsin Academic Excellence Scholarship, and Wisconsin Technical Excellence Scholarship. Cause those are two that are awarded to somebody, so that, um, is our current, actually, our current policy, we just added that. To, uh, the LOUDY system. Well, just again, to clarify how type, how it's selected, how tiebreakers are, et cetera, because it's pretty common to have multiple four final students. Multiple valedictorians, but only one can get that Wisconsin Academic Excellence Scholarship, which is full tuition to any university. Or not full tuition, I take that back, it's less than, it's like four thousand dollars, I believe, now.
Yeah.
Four thousand annually or something, anyway, that's added, clarify that. Yeah, you, they just, we just added it to this. You're okay with that, and I don't know if you want to prove one at a time or you want to do as a slate after pointing out a few of these things.
Try to do them as a group and.
Next to it, critical and timely, um, as I mentioned previously, we want to really take our time and get it right. Um, as you know, there are, um, in neighboring districts, groups that are going around and injecting some materials and et cetera, so. I, I, I think it's more of a matter of not if, if, but when. Uh, and having a strong policies and best advice to get, uh, from largely with also about Amanda Olsen and her network of. Um, library media specialists, you know, just have a good policy for, um, clarity, so we. We, uh, we're fortunate, uh, and have a Dan Mallon, who is the policy resource guide guy. Go through, um, both of these literally word by word and we spent, I don't know. Yeah, I want to say two hours or so on these two policies, but we appreciate that, because it's like, yeah. We feel very good about every little detail and, and, and most of it is about, um, kind of the procedure when there is a request for reconsideration of materials. And, you know, Kelly didn't, um, include that request for reconsideration form on here, it's not a policy. But it's so closely tied to the policy and so relevant, I think at least, you know, I think it's important to know, you know, like he even had suggestions, like in every. Checkbox and we have requirements, you need to be, um, a district constituent. This can't be from outside the district and, you know, basically consumer taxpayer dollars and time when you're not even one of the stakeholders in our district. You know, it has to be student, staff, person, community member, parent, et cetera. And a lot of, and our first resolution with everything we do is try to be, you know, more of an informal and individual accommodation. Um, instead of peat everything in a broad stroke and, and I make this. Uh, rule for all because of a few type of thing, um, so. Um, you can see that's in there, even says if, if it's, you're just seeking individual accommodation, stop filling out the form now, you know, that's all we need. And goes to the building principals first and then we need a committee, it says exactly who's on the committee. And then that committee makes a recommendation to me and then I make a final decision. And then if that's appeal, then it goes to the board, so that's why the board is not involved in those processes until. That third step.
Aren't we, are we comfortable with that? Policies will and can be followed? I mean, because a lot of times you have policy and then you get a new librarian, they don't know, and then all of a sudden the decision is made and they didn't even follow the policy. That's where we're really getting.
We are, and Amanda and I have had a contact with that and then instructional materials, right, is. When Nick is director teaching learning, there's instruction materials, which they're, they're obviously textbooks in every classroom. Um, that's just a couple of few libraries sort of separate things, but there's a, um, clear process for selection, you know, just randomly pick. It's not Amanda Olsen's thing, it's based on number of, um. Uh, organizations out there and, you know, uh, one thing, you know, I did learn through this and I think it says that in a form, you know, um. One of the last question in the form is, are you aware that state statute one twenty-one point O two para one, para H requires school districts to make available. To all pupils' library and instructional resources that quote reflect the cultural diversity and pluralistic nature of American society. So, and again, you know, the, you know, required to, uh, have a wide variety of materials. Um, it just makes it available, you know, some people say, well, we're pushing it, we're not pushing anything, it's just available. Whatever it is, somebody can object to, we get that, not everybody sees things the same way, but. Obviously, um, my mantra always is to try to, you know, we're not gonna look, go looking for controversy, we, we have enough. Um, things to keep us busy as a school district, focus on kids, but then, you know, go looking for it, so. Anyway, I say all that, I feel very comfortable, we're fortunate to have Dan Mallon, spend that time with us, communicate with Amanda. It's, it is a big thing among all the superintendents, we're all communicating about this, um, so I think it's, it's perfect timing. To approve it tonight, we now have a policy, updated policy on the books. So that's, again, one is library media, the other is, um, instructional material selection. And then the other two, uh, interlibrary loan, internet safety, assistive technology, school counseling. Uh, those all, nothing's changed, no edits, add, or additions. Want to prove second reading as a slate.
I'm going to approve of the second reading G through. In.
So first was the, or first was Jeff, second was Dave, any discussion? None on favor? Pose, motion carries. Do we have consideration of the curse readings? Uh, there's no role at this time on that.
Again, Dan helped with the number of these two, combining, they had athletics and there's colastic separate, and he's like, this is probably like, it's critical and encompassing. Um, he's really helpful with the first readings there. You get a lot of these head through clubs and activities.
So we'll move on to W, which is consideration of approval of eliminating the board policies since we. Have new ones in place now, we can get rid of the old ones, so we need a first.
I'll move to through eliminating board policies. Listed by one through four.
Okay, so Lance first.
Second.
Jeff, second, any discussion? And, um, all in favor?
Right, right.
I oppose. Motion carries. Moving on to fourteen, possible future agenda items. Anything? So then we have important upcoming dates, April thirtieth is our board development meeting. Here at the district office at one o'clock, I believe it goes to one or to eight, is that correct?
One date is on the invite.
Okay, uh, May tenth is the staff appreciation breakfast starting at seven fifteen in each building. Uh, May tenth is the staff appreciation breakfast, starting at seven fifteen in each building. The seventeenth is our school board meeting here at seven. The twenty-sixth is graduation at the high school at seven. And June second is the staff retirement and recognition event at two P M in the high school gardens. Alright, so, uh, we have closed session.
Yep. To read that.
Okay, so, per Wisconsin State statute nineteen point eight five one out. Considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories, or disciplinary data of specific person. Preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons. Or applies, which if discussed in public would be likely to have substantial adverse effect upon the reputation. Of any person referred to in such histories or data, or in other type of problems or investigations. Uh, student assessment and exemption request. So to go into closed session, we do roll call?
We need a motion first.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
So first was Vince, Jeff was second.
Alright.